So the 500 is next, it's not this year. Okay, we just thought you'd come up with that. Yeah, that's the parent sixty-seven, and then Ron said today he needed 500. Okay, so that's next year, that's this year.
Parents have to be able to change today, you know, to be notified to speak on it. I guess we can reverse it. Yeah, maybe we can do it in May, we can revive it and do it all once.
We've got a few.
They originally said a week, and then they're like, no, we should talk about it. Well, I think we work on it.
They originally said a week, and then they're like, no, we should talk about it. Well, I think we work on it.
Do you have to wait for Mark?
Okay, why don't we, why don't we get started? So we are resuming our meeting from this morning, and we're picking up with item A09. And this is the renewal of the charter petition for Keeler Leadership Academy.
Move approval.
Any discussion?
No.
Mr. DeBeck.
Yeah, I prefer to have one more due to four riots in front of us, oh nine, ten, eleven, and twelve.
Okay, we've got a motion to approve all A09, ten, eleven, and twelve in a second.
Yeah, actually, I'd like to pull one off, but.
Okay. Which one do you want to pull?
Ifton.
A, A11?
Right.
Okay, so can we then do an amended, approve A9, ten, and twelve?
Yeah, yes.
Okay. We've got one speaker on, on A09 Keeler, Kevin Malloy.
I'm back. Good evening, my name is Kevin Malloy, I'm a senior financial accountant in this district's charter school financial office. When Keeler Middle School converted to charter school status five years ago, the on loan employees knew, and this board agreed, that the on loan status would only last through the charter's first term. That first term is now ending, and the on loan employee agreements and job entitlements not given before or since to any other district employee should stop. At the board's March ninth, two thousand and ten, meeting, a district teacher who was on loan to Keeler Leadership Academy Charter School questioned why she was being asked to decide between her district employment or being employed by the Keeler Charter School. With all due respect to the teacher and the good work she may be doing at Keeler, she actually works for the Keeler Leadership Academy, and she should be employed by the Keeler Leadership Academy. Keeler is one of the two schools in particular whose original leadership and board were adamant that teacher and staff not have the kind of job entitlements that are provided to these on loan employees. In fact, Keeler's founding principal is still regularly interviewed by the media and continues to expound on the fact that charter schools are allowed to hire and fire at will, and that regular public schools should follow their lead. Of course, it's easy to advocate that policy until one realizes that same principal had the luxury of a district job when her contract was not renewed by the charter Keeler's board. It's somewhat disingenuous when charter school supporters constantly berate the public schools for having job entitlements, but don't look at their own actions as being in any way hypocritical while remaining silent regarding the job entitlements of on loan employees. These on loan employee agreements should never have happened in the first place, and as the agreement was only for the first term of the charter, they should not be renewed. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Malloy. Okay, any further comment on A09, A10, and A12?
I'm trying to understand what I just heard.
I'm sorry.
We had, we had modified, I think, the agreement that on, or is that the members of the charters? You know, certain, certain length of time, and then they had to make a choice, and now we said that they have the right to return.
Two of them, two schools.
Specific people.
I can't see why it wouldn't just for all charters that were given the same kind of first year.
We've already had this debate.
I mean, I think it's consistent for us to, why would we make an exception? First of all, we're in that charter, we're together. So, you know, while I thought that you already agreed that we're going to extend this to all of those same, the people of the same, I'll call it, I don't know, I'll call it pickles, but the same kind of a personnel agreement. Apparently we're not, is that the case? Can we now extend to the same privileges to all members of the charter community?
I think we were very specific about who we were grandfathering in to allow this on loan status, that's, that's what we were.
So what's that got to do with the renewals?
I don't know, good question.
If these charters were saying that they have the right to turn their people, and they don't have a right to return to the district at all? I mean, I think that's what the conversation.
There's no part of that, I mean, we're.
So, you know, maybe the speaker would come back, I'd like to understand what issue they put in my speaker. I'd like to know how close I stand.
Okay. When they converted, five years ago, for five years, Gompers, Keeler, King Chavez, all three of them, and Arts Primary and Athletics, and Memorial, which went from Armored District to a nonprofit status, for the first time ever, those employees who were there to begin with were allowed to become on loan employees. That had never been given to any other charters that converted, Charter School San Diego, there were lots of others that went from Armored District to nonprofit, nor was it ever given to any district employees who had never been at charter schools, so when a school started as a nonprofit to begin with, you couldn't go off and be a non loan employee. And it hadn't happened since, because Einstein went, and they were never even offered that. O'Farrell is going, and they're not being offered that. This is a status that should never have happened to begin.
Yeah, point of order, this is not what we are discussing. Today we're discussing the renewal of this charter school.
Well, it has to do with the renewal.
And no, they're not really, I mean, that's not really.
Of course, it does.
You're not advocating that we deny the renewal of Keeler as a whole.
Well, it's part of Keeler.
Because of this, you're, so you're recommending against renewing Keeler as a school because of three teachers who have received on loan.
It's not three teachers.
It's not, Mr. DeBeck, this is an issue that's important to him and the consideration of this item, so I believe we need to give it consideration.
I'm trying to figure out the personnel effect of what you said, and whether or not I'm going to vote for anyone or all of these things, what you're telling me, and I'm trying to verify.
An information.
Well, I was under the impression is because, I'm here because this Keeler is being renewed today, and I was told I can only speak about a subject that's on here, and Keeler is the subject. So anything that has to do with Keeler's petition, is that not correct?
Sure.
Okay, so Keeler's board and their, and their founding principal were adamant from day one, constantly berating this district. In fact, they still say, you know, that district employees, teachers shouldn't even be placed at schools based on seniority, they should be placed on what the needs of that school. Yet here are the example of these people saying, well, we're on loan employers, we're going to have the guaranteed job in case something doesn't happen. In fact, that's exactly what happened to the principal at that school. She was let go by that board, and all of a sudden she came back and became a district employee. And Gompers, it's the same issue, they publicly vilify this district every single chance they get in the media. Why would they possibly want to be district employees? We so damaged their school, their students, their community, why would you possibly wish to be a district employee and receive your paycheck from the San Diego Unified School District? We hate you, you know, if, we so hate Gompers and Keeler, why would you wish to be a district employee? This is a philosophical issue with these charter schools, and that they are backed by these national organizations, they say that teachers and staff should not have any kind of entitlements and jobs, and unions and yardage should be out the window, yet here are these same people sitting here with a guaranteed luxury of a district job. No other charters in this district have this with them. Okay, it's wrong, it's absolutely wrong, they should be embarrassed, they should be ashamed of these boards for allowing this to continue to happen. This board shouldn't allow it, and their board shouldn't allow it. Keeler, O'Farrell's board is not going to allow it, and neither should Keeler and Gompers. I hate to drill this subject, but it's ridiculous, they should never have been a happen.
Thank you, Mr. Malloy. Any further discussion on the renewal of Keeler?
What's the motion that's on the floor?
The motion on the floor is to approve items A09, A10, and A12.
All but eleven.
All but eleven. All right, all in favor? Okay, item A11.
Move approval.
We have a second.
Well, for the purpose of discussion, yes.
Okay, so we've got a motion and a second. Do we want to have any staff discussion first before we have board discussion? Mr. Kova, do you want to?
President Brewer, I think it might be appropriate for some remarks from the Charter School office just to set the table for the board.
Great, thanks.
Members of the board, Superintendent Kova, my name is Moisés Aguirre, I'm with the Charter Office. Ifton Charter School has granted their first charter March first, two thousand and five. The school is currently seeking a charter renewal through the term of two thousand and fourteen, two thousand and fifteen. The school currently offers grades K eight, located at the former Jackson Elementary School site at fifty-four sixty-five Oklahoma. This charter petition was reviewed by staff and feedback was provided to the petitioners. While the petitioners did respond to feedback, there were a couple of items that are in need of greater detail and, and greater comprehensiveness to span the, the five years of the next charter petition. So with that, the petitioners have worked collaboratively with our office, however, the charter still needs to reflect a more robust plan for addressing those areas of shortcomings which are included in your conditions. So that's why Charter Office is recommending conditional approval of this charter petition or renewal.
Okay.
Mr. DeBeck.
Well, the way I look at it, there are four items of insufficiency that are required to be dealt with in order for them to bring the charter to acceptable levels. So I can't see how I could vote for a conditional. I mean, there's a thirty day window here, I'm assuming that, you know, they have time toward June thirtieth to meet the thirty day requirements, and that I could expect that before I voted to approve the renewal of the charter. So on the basis of the fact that there are insufficiencies that can be corrected in time, I'm not going to support the renewal of the charter at this time.
I agree. I saw on the original document, it says approve the renewal of Ifton Charter, and then below I see the condition, so I'm in the same situation, which is if there are some conditions which haven't been met, those should be met before we approve the renewal.
Okay, we've got some speakers, I think I'm calling.
Yes, one question.
Yes, yeah.
Excuse me before you, stand before you go away, do we have to approve this today?
Well, we're starting to run it up against the, some of the timelines, but if the petitioner would agree to an extension, I believe there's sufficient room for extension, but I would leave that to the petitioner.
That's my question, I know sometimes we have a strict timeline to process things and.
That's correct, but also, one of the things that's, I think, critically important, whenever we, after, actually just before the board workshop, one of the things that we started to do was to offer to you as a board, as a body, three different options, to outright deny, to approve, and then to approve with conditions. And the whole idea around approving with conditions is to kind of chart out some specific things that we think ought to happen, and to establish some timelines, with the assumption and the understanding that the charter petitioners would clearly work and address those things. So that's kind of why we presented that there for you.
But with the thirty day conditions that you put on it, do we have to approve this today? Can we delay this approval, whether it's conditional or not, for thirty days, according to the charter laws that we have?
Pretty much is what, what Moisés indicated, we're, we're up against some pretty tight timelines.
Is that, no, we can't, so.
I would encourage the board to make some sort of decision about this tonight. That is, that is what I would say.
And if I may add, they did meet the minimum requirements for renewal, they had a one hundred and fourteen point growth in their API the year prior to this past year, so they did meet the, the minimum requirement for renewal. Again, these are areas that, that need greater comprehensiveness, and that's why we brought this, this recommendation forward.
Moisés, what happens if they do not meet any of the conditions within thirty days?
Well, at that point, we would have to have a follow-up conversation, to be honest, with you as a board and with them. The petitioners have been collaborative, as I mentioned, and we're running up against timelines, that's why this, this charter item came forward to the board.
Yeah, I, you know, I think that the, these problems have been longstanding, and that it's not anything that can be cured in thirty days, and it's in the best interest of the students and families at this school that they receive notification here in late April, that they need to be looking for another school for their children. I think that waiting for another thirty days doesn't give them the opportunity or enough time, especially because school's going to be out here in June, they're going to have to start going and visiting schools and talking to other schools and deciding what's the best thing on behalf of their children, and, and what decisions they should be making, because when schools, once school is out, that opportunity will pretty much be gone. So, you know, my recommendation is that we go ahead and make the decision tonight.
What we're asking the school to do is to submit a plan of action within thirty days, not to necessarily resolve every single element that we have concern, but at least articulate, these are the things that we're going to do, this is a time period, they're going to take care of these things.
But they've done that before already. So, I mean, we've had that, we've had this discussion with this particular school already in the past, so.
Is that true or not? Have we submitted these conditions to this school before?
See, I don't have that history.
Yeah, well, now you're talking about a separate charter petition with a similar group, organization, that was a separate charter, it was a charter for a high school petition, at this point, this charter's for a K eight.
Yeah, but it was based on the K eight problems within the K eight, and they were petitioning to go to a high school. And so they've, they've still not, even though they reapproved the high school, they still have not, you know, addressed this issue. And, and I don't think a thirty day plan is really, I think it's insurmountable, even if they submitted a plan within thirty days, I don't think the plan is, you know, the, well, at any rate, I.
They did submit some documentation of outreach efforts as part of their good faith efforts to address their particular concern, that were part of the board docs exhibit, so I don't know if you saw some of their outreach documents. Again, this is just, we're trying to get them to focus and provide what their plan is going to be for the next five years. They have at least partially addressed the concerns that came up, trying to broaden their, their appeal or their outreach, but again, this is a, that was a separate charter, that was for a high school charter petition, this is for a K eight renewal.
Okay, we've got some speakers, Nancy Obar, Abdul Kader Mohammed, Sandra Martinez, Jamie Esposito, and John Lamo.
My name is Abdul Kadir Mohammed, I'm the director of Ifton Charter School. I live eleven one nine three Colono Route Fifty-seven apartment, San Diego, Subcon nine two one two six. Thank you, respect the board, and thank you, Dr. Tony and Master Moses from the Charter Office. Ifton Charter School has done a good job. Test scores of the school are good, children are learning, the school finances, school finances are in order and strong, school has continued to grow and has a diversity teaching staff, school has done good things for the children, should be renewed without condition. And thank you very much for the board and all community member and Charter Office.
Thank you, Mr. Malloy.
Good afternoon, my name is Sandra Martinez, I live at twenty-four seventy-one Barlicove, San Diego, nine two one three nine. I am currently Ifton's instructional leader, and I have been the leader for the last two and a half years. I am a lifelong educator with over thirty-five years of experience as a teacher and an administrator. I have dedicated my career to educating struggling students in San Diego. My concern here today is the condition number one that you have stated, saying that it is not clearly provided, that we have not provided our goals and metrics by which the school will measure pupil outcomes. If you look at page twenty-six, we have clearly identified six major areas of student outcomes. These are fundamental core competency that we want all our students to master. The first three are specifically aligned with the RLEA plan, which was, was approved by California Board of Education. So I'm somewhat confused when you talk about that we do not have a five-year plan. There is a document, an attachment that you have that outlines our LEA plan. Our goals, our six outcomes are simply English language arts, English language acquisition for English learners, math, technology, science, and physical education. As per district staff guidelines, we have talked to them before, and they have helped us to identify our goals, our metrics, all of this, again, based on approved LEA plan. These goals were also an objectives were developed with our instructional staff and relevant stakeholders. So again, we have outlined all our goals with the LEA plan, and also the no child left behind measurements, monitoring, accountability, state API targets, state content standards. There's also a concern that I have when you say that there is no unique aspect to the, to the charter. What we want you to realize is that our uniqueness is our instructional practices, which responds to the students' learning needs in order that we can achieve the outcomes. In other words, we have the opportunity in our instructional practices to differentiate instruction, to provide the extra support that is needed for the students, we check, there's more student talk, partner talk, accountable talk, more of these supports available to our students that would not be readily seen in a school that has successful students. Our instructional practices, again, are geared to our struggling students. We use the standardized evaluation, the standardized tests, like everybody else, our standards and metrics are widely used as measures of proficiency that are globally accepted, and we do this to evaluate the student learning and to identify the areas that need improvement. So in closing, we have submitted our entire LEA plan to you, we have given you over a hundred pages of goals, student outcomes, and metrics. If this is not sufficient, we welcome direct specific guidance from the district, we will be glad to sit down with the district to find out what we can do. We respectfully ask that this board approve this renewal without condition, as we feel that we have already comprehensively described this in our charter. Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Martinez.
Respected board members, Superintendent Kova, and members of the community, my name is Nancy Obar. I reside at one twenty-five oh seven Carmel Canyon Road, nine two one one three zero. I've been the administrative assistant at Ifton Charter School for the past three years, and I have worked in education for over twenty years. My concern is with your second condition regarding diversity and recruitment. Ifton has an admission process which is fair and open to all K through eight students residing in the county of San Diego. If a student comes to Ifton, we take them, we take all comers. Up until this time, we have been able to take every student who applied during our pre-enrollment application period before school opens in the fall. If there ever becomes a need, we have policies in place to conduct a fair lottery. Every year we dedicate over three thousand dollars of our budget to outreach. We have advertised our program with ads on KPBS, direct mail circulars to over two thousand five hundred of our neighbors, the San Diego News, Union Tribune, the Rolando Park Reporter, and we've distributed thousands of flyers to neighborhood homes and businesses. During the three years I have been at Ifton, students have been admitted in a fair and impartial manner, without regard to ethnicity, national origin, gender, disability, or achievement level. It is our desire to welcome and serve all children in the San Diego area. I respectfully request that the board approve our charter without conditions.
Hi, my name's Jamie Esposito, five seven zero zero Baltimore Drive, number two four two La Mesa, nine one nine four two. I've been a teacher at Ifton for four years since the school opened in two thousand and six, I'm also a member of the Board of Directors. At Ifton Charter School, our motto is enlightenment through academic rigor, cultural literacy and compassion. The teachers, staff, parents, students, and community members practice this motto in many ways. As a teaching team, we plan our curriculum in a thoughtful way that connects to our students' past and prepares them for the future. We scaffold our lessons to meet the needs of every kind of learner, including students who are new to the country, those learning English, those who require modifications, those who require gifted and talented interventions. We regularly communicate with our students' parents, work to assure our students will receive a cohesive and balanced education throughout their years at Ifton, and we seek out the most beneficial professional development opportunities that will help us in our endeavor to ensure the success of all of our students. As a staff, we adhere to our students' cultural beliefs regardless of what culture they may be. We exude sensitivity to all religions, planning our schedule around more than one religion's observed holidays. As a school, we are responsive to the community that we serve. We have created a place where refugee families from Somalia, Kenya, Ethiopia, Iraq, and other war-torn countries feel safe. We are meeting their expectations of what an American education should be in an environment that offers small class sizes, thoughtful instruction, support in the development of learning English, and standards-based content that ensures their students are learning what they need to know to be successful in this country and in life. As a Board of Directors, we strive to adopt and follow the best policies, make decisions that will promote and sustain our school, and work for the betterment of Ifton Charter School. Over the past four years, every time the district has submitted feedback to our school, we have made efforts to implement the goals and requirements set before us. Ultimately, our school is a place where many families feel safe and comfortable. I'm proud to be a founding member at Ifton, and as a lead teacher, the secretary of the Board of Directors, and a multifaceted stakeholder Ifton, I'm clearly not male, Somali, or Muslim. And yet my presence is ongoing, my voice is heard, and my input is valued. Please support our efforts and our commitment to, to learning and growing as a school community, and please don't take us off track from our main goal, meeting the needs of our students. Thank you.
Good evening, board members, superintendent. My name is John Lamo, I'm with Procopio Corey Hargreaves and Savage, my address is five twenty-five B Street, Suite twenty-one hundred, San Diego, nine two one oh one. And I want to just briefly address staff's concern about the board composition for Ifton Charter School. And first, I'll say that I, for the past fifteen years, represented numerous school districts and boards of nonprofit corporations for charter schools, hospitals, and other and boards of nonprofit corporations for charter schools, hospitals, and other entities. And I will say that this board, and it's not disputed in the staff report, is lawfully composed pursuant to the Corporation's Code and pursuant to its bylaws. And although it's not indicated in the staff report, I presume that by insular, staff has observed that five of the six board members are Somali immigrants, and that's true. And I suppose it's not surprising, considering that the school was founded by Somali immigrants for the purpose of assisting newcomer children to the country. And there's certainly nothing wrong with that, and there's nothing improper with that. And as a matter of record, around this time last year, you authorized the Iften High School charter with exactly the same board member composition as the corporation board has today, and this issue was not raised or discussed at that time. That having been said, this is a working board for this school. They're very involved in the day-to-day operations of the school and the improvement of the children in the school. And frankly, it's difficult to get people to volunteer for an unpaid free job on a nonprofit corporation board to do that. So again, it's not surprising that the people that care are people that care about the newcomer children to the country. That having been said, any board member appointments when vacancies occur, occur at publicly noticed meetings, and efforts will be taken, to the extent they haven't already been taken greatly, to make sure there's an application and there's a vetting process. So anyone who wants to participate on this board, they could be fairly considered for participation on this board. And that having been said, there's one other issue that's in the staff report that hasn't been addressed, which is this, an explicit statement of a right to unionize, an Element O. The term "unionized" really isn't addressed or even, doesn't even exist in the ed code. However, that's not, that's not a problem for the, for Iften. That's a statement, a true statement of law, and that's correct, and that will be included in the charter. And if there are any questions that the board or the superintendent may have for me, I'd be happy to respond to them at this time.
Thank you. Ms. Jackson?
Okay, go for it.
Let me just take a second and address a few things that I think are critically important. First off, when the Iften High School petition came through, I probably had been on the job a couple of weeks, couple of months, and the general counsel clearly knows about my concerns regarding the petition that came for this board and some concerns that I raised just about that, specifically going to education code, which is about basically achieving the racial and ethnic balance among the pupils that is reflective of the general population within the school district. So I've raised some concerns about that then. Now, this body may have not received those, but those are clearly some concerns that were raised. Second thing, this is not about the lottery. All we've asked for is if you are doing things within the community, because I remember this from the face-to-face conversation with the principal and with the administrators, is if you're doing things in the community, we want you to document what those things are. If you're doing things to get the word out in areas that are beyond where your school is, by all means, give us a rundown of what that looks like and what you intend to do in the future. Let me go to one other thing. If you look in page 39 and 40, I don't know if you have that document with you, but it's page 39 and 40 of their charter petition. It just lists the staff there. And if you really, really, really want to, excuse me, you list the members of their board. If you really, really want to look at it in a thoughtful way, we're talking about a good percentage of the people who are connected with the board have, they have a decided interest in the school because they're either consultants to the school or staff to the school. And we're just simply saying, what are some other possibilities that you could have?
A parent.
That's, that's really it. It could be a parent, I mean, just what are some other possibilities? So we aren't proposing anything, I don't think, that's earth-shattering. We're not saying that it's a horrible place for kids. That's not all. We're just simply saying, what are some things that would make this an even better place? How can we move this up even more? In a very collaborative way, and we did that face-to-face, instead of sending some kind of letter.
Okay. So my question to the leadership team of Iften is where is documentation for the outreach? I know there has been a question that has been asked before, and I know I see the ads in here in the newspaper and that type of thing, but those are older. So in that, so I think that is a concern that the staff is sharing, that yes, you did it back in '06, but this is 2010. So what have you done, you know, in the last couple of years to improve the racial makeup of your students? The, and certainly, I, you know, because I get his point, you know, I get, but my, my challenge back was that do we do due diligence with every charter that comes forward? Because of this charter, the students may be 95% African. There are other charters that have a percentage, a very high percentage, of other ethnic students, and we don't bring that right up to the attention. We don't look at their board and scrutinize their board as well. And why was this one? But I'm not going to go there today. My question for the, for the Iften leadership team is, what have you done to diversify the school within the last year coming up to this petition? And then, why don't you have parents on your Board of Directors? You have staff. I see it's diversified as far as your teachers on your board, but why don't you have parents on your board? And is that a hard thing to accomplish?
Yeah.
Yes.
Well, we have the, you know, the, our board is a, is a parent, and it's an employee, it's a community member. Three of the board is a parent.
Okay, I'm looking at page 39, and if you could turn to page 39, could you identify who on your board does what, so we all know?
I think so, in the, in the, in the list.
Yeah, I'm looking at the list right now, but we need to know. I mean, if you're saying that what they're saying is not true, then look at the list on page 39 and tell me which one is parent, which one is staff, which one is community.
Well, really, the, look at the board. I know they're the board.
Okay, maybe Scotty can tell me, he can look at it, he can tell me, that's fine.
Was it number five?
Aseeb Ashar Harsan.
The parent is Mohammed Mahmood.
Okay, Mohammed, I can't have him, what is he?
Mohammed Mahmood is a parent.
Parent, okay.
He's a Dean, Hazin, he's a Dean Ahmed, he's a parent.
Okay, okay, parent, okay.
And Bashir Hassan is a parent too? Bashir Hassan.
I've got to point an order here.
Bashir Hassan is a parent?
I'm just trying to find out, may I?
I don't understand that. Well, what you're doing is what had to have been done. And what I was trying to get at is, I was raising a point of order, which was, the order was, are we going to vote for the, are we, we're not going to examine the charter and find out sufficiency, because that's not our job. What we have in front of us is a written set of documents, which we were supposed to have reviewed in order to determine whether we're going to renew it. I believe that the recommendation of giving 30 days to get it in order makes sense.
What's your point of order, Mr. Deback?
Well, my point of order is, I think we're, we're actually examining the charter for sufficiency and not determining what our process would be. On our agenda is vote for it or against it, or, or ask for, you know, a conditional approval.
I understand what the...
Well, I don't think we, I don't think it's our job to examine the entire application to determine whether it's sufficient or not.
It's the current motion. It's the current motion on the floor. Which, what is the current motion on the floor?
To approve the staff's recommendation.
To approve the staff's recommendation, okay? And, and if there's questions about that, then I wanted to clarify that.
Staff recommendation is to...
To approve it with conditions.
All right.
Okay.
And so you're examining the conditions.
So, right, to make sure that they're valid conditions. And a question would be that if these conditions were presented to you earlier, why weren't they done? Which was a question that has come up. Because, you know, if we're going to give you 30 days to do this, the question, I guess, the staff is posing to, that we're asking is, why wasn't this done? It didn't have to wait till now to be given you a 30-day conditional one?
You know, the, the condition itself, the condition itself, and the, we're saying, the points came from the condition. Really, the, I, you know, the outcome measurement, we did everything, and everything on file, and we did it. How we did, we understand. We go through, we're making the, our LEA plan, and that's the, what's the guardians of the district, and this charter office. We get from them. We don't make it. That's where we make the, our outcome measurement. And according to the points, outreach, outreach we did, and we did, we did every year. And I think so that's not, you know, the legal issue. And we never get any guidance from that, from the charter office. And the last review was everything accurate in our review. They don't point out anything about that. I don't know what it came from. I'd say this, I see it's a very simple issue. They can say we do, and outreach, we do every year planning, all this, Nancy Obara, she tell, it's a plan for outreach every year. KPBS, newspapers, outreach, churches, messages everywhere to make outreach. That's our plan every year, not one year plan. And we did, I think so.
Thank you, Mr. Mohammed.
Thank you. Thank you very much.
Just to answer the question about board composition that was raised earlier, there's actually three parents, one teacher, and two community members on the board, and that's a, that's a typical board composition for most charter schools. And to respond to one, one issue that was raised earlier, that was raised by Board Member Nakamura at the very beginning of this, which is the question of, are you going to approve or deny the charter at this time, or extend for 30 days, which is, you know, could cause some disarray? You know, technically, in the Charter Schools Act, your action is either to approve the petition or deny it. The concept of a conditional approval is kind of nebulous. So if, if, if the board, the board's choice here is to conditionally approve, is recommended by staff, it's not clear to me what happens at the end of that 30 days. Does then staff check off the boxes and the charter is approved, as if it were approved tonight, or does it come back here? It's not clear to me. So perhaps that, that could be part of the motion, if that, if that is what the board is going to proceed with. I would, of course, urge you just to approve it, and we will follow up with staff with that information.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Yes, well, first of all, I mean, I think that there is a very good and comprehensive application with a lot of information, a lot of work, and I think that there's evidently a lot of success. I think part of the comprehensiveness of the application is there's even a page in here explaining to the board what we are supposed to do, in terms of, which we're always asking, as far as what are the criteria for approving or not approving a charter, meeting the terms, good pupil outcomes, physically well-managed and so forth. The issue I have, and this is not just an issue with the school, but it is when a recommendation comes forward from the staff, that there are certain conditions that should be met, which, the type of the conditions which we've heard about before. It seems reasonable to me, because we are supposed to scrutinize and make decisions rather than just automatically approving, that we should postpone approving this charter rather than approving with conditions, which seems rather nebulous, but to actually give time to clarify these issues. It says submit within 30 days. I wouldn't have any problem within two weeks. If they come back and staff has been satisfied that these conditions have been met, then to move forward at that point. But that's, that's what my recommendation would be, would be to work as quickly as possible and to come back, so that we're not as a board operating under, you know, the staff saying that there are some problems here and going ahead and approving it. And I understand, too, that there are some counterpoints that the Iften staff has brought up in terms of what the staff has said, but I think that needs to be worked out between the charter school and the staff before the next meeting.
I will to withdraw my motion if this can come back in 30 days.
Or less.
Or sooner.
Or sooner.
Sure.
Okay?
All right. Thank you. That concludes this meeting.